Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, those of you that come regularly to our board meetings are going to see a difference in our agenda and how we operate. I'm going to ask your patience with us as we kind of work through this ourselves because this is our first meeting. And I'd also like to welcome Dr. Stich to the team.
Thank you. Glad to be here.[57.69][57.69](Applause)
So our next order of business is adopting tonight's agenda for the meeting for August 8th.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next order of business is focused on students' results, and this is why we're making some changes. You'll notice that our board meetings are going to be very focused on students and the results that we're getting in the work that we're doing, and also in monitoring the district operations. So that will be predominantly what we're working on during these meetings. So we have four results policies that we will be talking about here under student results. Our first readings. The first policy, and do we have any copies of these in here? If anybody wants to see what they are, there's a few copies up there.
We're available for the public to look at once the meeting was published.
Yeah. One of the changes that we've made is in Board Docs. For those of you who have accessed Board Docs, historically, you've only been able to access the agenda and not the attachments to the agenda. Starting with this meeting, the attachments will all be made public just the morning of the meeting, so that you'll be able to see them. The board sees them ahead of time, so that they can ask us questions, get clarification, and we can fix anything ahead of time. But then we'll make those public that morning. And for the policies that the board's looking at tonight, we do have some hard copies if anybody wants to take a look at those. There's some three-ring binders behind Elizabeth, so if you wanted to follow along.
Feel free. Yeah. Okay. So our first results policy, we call it our mega result. Students will graduate prepared for personal success in their choice of career and/or post-secondary education, committed to contribute to the common good, and motivated to continue the pursuit of knowledge throughout their lives.
Well, I was going to share with the people in the audience that may not have made it to the workshops. This spring and summer, the board participated in five full days of workshops where we looked at some higher-level governing policies that are above our current policy manuals. And these policies break down into four major areas. One is board policies on how the board itself functions. Then there will be board superintendent relation policies on how we interact with each other as the board and the superintendent. Then there's operations expectations policies that I'll get into more detail on the next one. And the final is the results policies. And the board worked with the cabinet, getting input from the cabinet during these workshops. And through the board input, board deliberation, and discussion through these workshops has defined the expectations that they expect the district to be able to achieve with and for our students. And once these are adopted, the role of myself and the administration will be to come back and provide an interpretation of this policy with what that means in real terms for how we are going to measure success in the district, what types of assessments are going to feed into that, what type of information we need to collect. And then annually, we'll be reporting on each element of these results policies, as well as the operations expectations policies, to the board in public meetings. So that the predominance of the board's work will be reviewing the reports that we provide on the board's expectations on, number one, how we run the district, and, number two, the results that we get for our students. So tonight is the first reading in the process of making these the official board policies. And on the 22nd of this month, if the board so chooses to adopt these policies, at that time, the current policy manual will be remanded to the superintendent as the custodian of that document to be able to maintain, make changes to that document. And the only policies from that manual that the board will specifically approve will be those that are statutorily required by the board for their approval. The rest of the policy manual becomes a district operations policy manual that the superintendent and the cabinet will maintain. So just to give you a little bit of the framework of what these policies are and how they fit in with our current governance structure. So with that now, we're really looking now at the results policies. And you want me to just kind of summarize this?
Sure.
Okay. So what Victoria read to you is the mega result of our results policies, which is the ultimate final outcome that the board expects us to have for our students. And when you read it, I'll read it again. "Students will graduate prepared for personal success in their choice of career and/or post-secondary education, committed to contribute to the common good, and motivated to continue the pursuit of knowledge throughout their lives." And that's a fairly lofty overall goal that each word has specific meaning and was specifically selected by the board. So when it comes to the interpretation of this policy, my job is going to be to go back, work with cabinet, work with our administrative team, with building principles, and start to talk about how would we define personal success in their choice of career or post-secondary education, or graduate prepared, committed to contribute. What does committed to contribute mean? And it may involve five or six different measures just on committed to contribute off of those two words within this policy. The next part of the results looks at, the next three parts really break down that mega result, because that's sort of the lofty overall arching vision that the board has for the students in Evergreen. The second part of the results policies is academic achievement. And under academic achievement, the expectation is that students will think critically and creatively, be able to analyze, evaluate, and synthesize complex ideas from multiple perspectives. And then specifically, students will achieve academically at a personally challenging rate, and students will demonstrate literacy and learning in all academic, career-focused, and elective subjects. And again, there's a lot of meat in those three sentences that we will be spending most of the winter and the spring digging into, what does that mean, and how are we going to define that? How are we going to measure that? And how are we going to report that annually on progress to the board? And it'll include creating a baseline of assessment data on where we are today, what are our three-year goals and our five-year goals, that the board will then hold me and the administration and the entire school district accountable for achieving for our students. The third portion of the four of this is the second breakdown area of the goals. First, we had academic achievement. Next, we have social and emotional development. So students will integrate skills, attitudes, and behaviors to deal effectively and ethically with tasks and challenges. Students will demonstrate collaboration, adaptability, which includes perseverance and resilience, communication, problem-solving, and self and social awareness. And then the final result deals with citizenship, where students understand, model, and advance the interconnectedness of individuals, cultures, communities, and their environment. Students will know and practice the duties, responsibilities, and rights of citizenship in a democratic society. Students will demonstrate cultural competency. Students will be respectful and compassionate. Students will understand how to advocate for change, and students will be good stewards of their environment. And if all of our students can do that, we will be successful as the Evergreen School District.
Thank you.
So that's what I have for presentation for the board.
Okay. Well, that's great. Do we have any citizen comments or questions? Since this is a first reading, we won't have a motion, but I would like to open this up for discussion by the board.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to add is, yeah, I mean, we talked about the results. I mean, those are huge for us as a board and a district. And in the beginning of that mega result policy, R1, you know, I think we feel really strongly, I know I feel really strongly that we want to prepare our students for success, whether they want to go to work right after high school, or whether they want to go on for post-secondary education. And so right off the bat, we say, you know, we want kids to be prepared for that career and/or post-secondary education. So I feel really strongly about that, and I like how that's worded.
And I would reply to that, that that came through loud and clear to me during the development, because there was a specific decision made to put choice of career prior to post-secondary education, because they wanted to emphasize that that is the ultimate goal, even beyond post-secondary education. And therefore, that should be our primary focus, is making sure that they're career-ready, including if that means going through post-secondary education.
And I think that we recognize that most of our kids post-high school are still going career rather than post-secondary. They'll outweigh.
Well, my comments with respect to the results policies is, we've been thinking about this kind of, I guess, board governance reform for quite a long time. And came onto this framework in order to make the work that we do more effective and more in line with results we're achieving for our kids. But that, oh, and the other comment is that the workshop experience was pretty intense. It wasn't an easy process by any stretch. And we went over each of these sentences for hours, it seemed, well, several minutes for each sentence. But we went over, and we went home and thought about it, and came back and redeliberated, and really went through a process to achieve the form that it's got right now. It's not set in stone, I imagine, because circumstances for our kids will change, but I was really happy to go through that process and do that difficult work. We've always meant these things. We've never articulated them quite as clearly in the time that I've been on the board as the text in the results policies laid them out as ultimate goals go for the kids.
I agree with that, because I think now that we have it set, that we'll be able to really now find the evidence and things that support that, and we can get the results that we're needing for kids, we'll be able to monitor those things more effectively throughout the year, and we'll be able to do it on a more regular basis.
Yeah. Another thing, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. Another thing I like is it's holistic. I mean, we're looking for results from our kids on, I guess, traditional hard skills. And we were talking about academic achievement in core subject areas, as well as electives, but from multiple perspectives. I like that part. But we're also talking about being proficient and learning some of the soft skills. You know, we talked about the social-emotional learning. So I think it's real important for us to be able to look at both. And I know we have separate results policies to be able to look at both. So that's another thing I like about it.
I also like the fact that it really looks at things from a global perspective. While it still talks about each individual student having a personally challenging experience and achieving academically that way, I like it that there's a lot of interconnectedness with others and how we are in this world, and having our kids have some good self-awareness. So it feels, there was a lot of thoughtfulness that went into this, and like Julie said, I'm sure things will evolve, but it's great to have a really sound position about our beliefs about what's happening and have there be accountability attached to it. Michael, did you have anything?
I think one last comment on this is, even though this one hasn't been approved, my plan is to share this with our entire admin team next Monday at our management seminar, because I think these results need to be what really drive our work, and I wanted to get these in front of people with my first opportunity to address the entire admin team.
So I think we're in agreement that these can come back for a second reading for final approval at the next board meeting. Okay. Next up on our agenda, monitoring district operations.
So we have 12 operations expectations policies that the board has developed and will be discussing for approval. The first of those is a global expectation, and this is the only one that I'm going to read out loud. The rest, I'm just going to summarize. And I felt the result was important enough that I really wanted to read that out loud, to have it on the record, have it on the video, as well as those in the audience who can access it. But the global expectation really sets the tone for how I, as the superintendent, am expected to operate the district in accordance with the board's expectations. And it says, "The superintendent shall not cause, allow, or fail to take responsible measures to prevent any practice activity, decision, or organizational condition that is inequitable, unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, imprudent, in violation of board policy, or endangers the district's public image or credibility." Fairly encompassing, but really sets the standard that I am expected to do the right thing with this district for everyone within the district. The rest of the OE policies are structured as such that the board either sets an expectation that the superintendent will always do something, sets an expectation that the superintendent will never do something, and clearly defines those responsibilities that the board has chosen to retain authority over, both the decision-making and the responsibility for those decisions. So as an incoming superintendent, it was a great exercise and opportunity to be able to work with the board, to get a clear understanding of their expectations on what my job is and what their job is, and the delineation that these operations expectations policies provide. Just to give you a quick summary of what the rest of the policies are, one is the emergency superintendent succession. So the board expects me annually to name somebody that in case I'm on an airplane and unattainable, out of cellphone coverage, or something, hopefully not medically, happens, and I'm unavailable to run the district, that there is a person who's clearly defined that will be the successor, that will take over district operations until the board has the opportunity to appoint somebody else to take over, or I'm able to return to work. We've worked on an organizational chart that we'll be presenting later this month that has that highlighted, who that individual is, and it'll be institutionalized. And part of the monitoring report is, once these policies are approved, and I provide them with the interpretation annually, I will bring evidence towards that policy, saying, here's the evidence that I am in compliance and I have named a emergency successor. The other areas are community stakeholder relationships, how the superintendent is expected to operate the district in order to maintain quality relationships with our stakeholders and maintain two-way dialogue with the stakeholders. There is personnel administration or human resources on the expectations for how we treat our employees and how we work with our employees. Financial planning with the budgeting process, and that will be the second policy that we bring back for you for interpretation with our reasonable indicators defined, as that falls into the whole budgets process. Ideally, what we would be doing in the future by next August is we will have our interpretation agreed upon, the indicators agreed upon. So when we bring you the budget in August for approval, we'll also bring you the monitoring report, and the budget will be a predominance of the evidence of our compliance with sound financial planning. We have financial administration, not just how we plan the finances, but how we actually run the district in the way of accountability, and making sure that we meet the board's expectations for clean audits and proper financial practices. We have asset protection, that we have insurance to be able to take care of disaster planning, and that we have systems in place to protect the district's assets from theft, loss, and avoid any negligence on the part of the administration towards our assets. Communications and support for the board. So there's expectations on how I and the cabinet will help facilitate the board with community interactions and getting input and dialogue from the community. Communications with the public, how I, as a superintendent, communicate with the public through the cabinet. Number 10 is the learning environment. What type of an environment do we create in a school that's conducive to learning for all of our students? And that one is pretty well-defined, and spent a lot of time during the policy development on coming up with what those expectations were. And the instructional program, which also includes creating that personalized learning environment, and what kind of program curriculum and teaching environment do we create beyond the physical environment? And the last of the OE policies is on facilities, on maintaining safe, orderly facilities within the district. And again, each one of these policies has certain things that I'm expected to always do, some things I'm expected to never do. And I think it was under facilities, I'm trying to remember which one it was under, the board chose to retain the authority for making boundaries for schools. So that was an example of a discussion point that we had, that legally, the board could delegate that to the superintendent. And so if we, if, or hopefully when we pass a bond next spring, and we start looking at constructing potentially an additional elementary school, if we need to change boundaries for elementary schools, that isn't something the board could delegate to me. But the board has chosen to retain that authority, so it would be my job to set up a process to bring the board adequate information for them to make that decision. The board retains the authority to make the decision, and as we've discussed, that gives the board also the accountability for the results from that decision. So that's what we have in the way of OE policies. I think that's probably enough detail for getting everybody up to speed. The board's well aware of what's in each of these, and I'll turn it over back to you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That was, there's a lot in there. Do we have any citizen comments or questions? Okay. I will open this up for discussion then by the board.
I think it's worth mentioning or repeating that John Stich is going to take the text that we worked out for these operational expectations policies. He's going to rephrase them and tell us what he thinks those mean, and seek our approval before he proceeds to turn that into operational policies. And that's going to, as far as I can tell, really help us make it clear to each other and to the public exactly what everyone can expect from the operation of the schools. Like the results policies, we hashed out the language pretty severely to make sure that we all agreed that, or at least developed a consensus about this being the right expectation for each of these little areas.
Yes. One comment I had is, while we were developing these policies in workshop, it was really good to have, of course, the whole board there, and we were working with Superintendent Stich. But you also had your cabinet there too, right? So they're side-by-side with us as we were developing the policies and giving us their feedback. And I think with them being there, it strengthens, you know, our resolve into what's in these policies. But it also, I think, greatly helps them know where we're coming from, so there should be some pretty, you know, common understanding of where we're coming from.
The other thing, too, I think it's important to note that a lot of this we do already in how we operate. You know, being on the school board is not doing the day-to-day management of the district. We like to say we don't get into the weeds of it, but we do have the responsibility and honor that has been given to us by being elected to represent the community and make sure that the needs of our community, and of course, the needs of our children, are met, and that the school system is run properly. And so having very clearly defined expectations throughout the district, there's no question about where we stand on these things. And so I like it, because I just feel like anybody, whether it be anybody who works for the district or a citizen, can have a clear picture of where this district stands on these issues and how they're going to operate.
And accountability on all sides and who's responsible.
I think one thing that's worthy of noting is, with each of these OE policies, all 12 of them, I'll be bringing, with the cabinet's assistance and support, of course, we'll be bringing you a compliance report or a monitoring report annually, and presenting you with evidence. At the end of the year, those 12 reports, as well as the results monitoring reports that we'll be bringing, will be basically put in a three-ring binder. The board will put a cover sheet on it, and that becomes my evaluation. Many of the superintendent evaluation tools that you'll find are very subjective and don't give a lot of very specific feedback to the superintendent. I will be, in essence, every month when we have one of these monitoring reports, telling the board how I think I'm doing in maintaining operations within these expectations and achieving the results of the district. The board will either confirm, hopefully confirm, that what I'm telling them is accurate. And then at the end of the year, that'll provide the entire summary of my performance. Similarly, we've had a discussion with cabinet that those expectations will permeate down throughout the organization, so that all of our evaluations as administrators will be aligned with the ultimate results of students and the operation of the district within these guidelines.
I think we all come back for second reading or approval at the next board meeting. Up we have under matters reserved for board action, the first reading on governance culture, policies one through nine. So these are the governance policies that we will be operating under, and will give the community the understanding about how this board is going to function and what our purpose is. I'm going to go ahead. This first one is kind of long, but just to kind of give an overview. The Evergreen Public Schools Board of Education represents, leads, and serves the community and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interest and by ensuring that all board and district action is consistent with law and the board's policies. The board's purpose is to assure that the district achieves the results described in the board's results policies for students, and that it operates according to the values expressed in the board's operational expectations policies. These policy values are based upon the board's declaration and beliefs. We declare that all students in the Evergreen Public Schools will have the opportunity to attain the skills necessary to be world-competitive upon graduation. We believe in a school system where no child is expendable. Every student, without exception, has the potential for growth, improvement, and success in life. We believe all students, given the right environment, will learn and excel when provided with authentically engaging work based on high standards. We believe that students are our priority, and decisions must be made on the basis of what's best for each child. We believe that a world-competitive school system is dependent on utilizing the unique talents and perspectives of staff, families, and community members. We believe all students, given the right environment and unwavering guidance, will develop the skills needed to face moral and ethical life challenges with integrity, honesty, and self-respect. So that's kind of our overarching... So that's kind of our overarching board purpose. And then we go into policies talking about our governing commitments and how we will operate encouraging full exploration of diverse viewpoints. We want to focus on the governance matters versus management issues, and that we will observe a clear separation of board and superintendent roles. And we will, you know, as we always do, make all of our decisions by a formal vote of the board because we work as a board, not as individuals. And our governing commitments goes into a lot of detail about just how we're going to conduct a meeting. We have policy in here that gives board job descriptions that talks about, again, what our role as board members are and how we're going to operate various areas. We have policy that talks about officers' roles, so the board president's role, vice president, legislative, and what that looks like. We have a policy that talks about any board committees that we might have and how those will be conducted, and that's a little, something a little bit new for us, so that remains to be developed and evolved. Something that I'm excited about is our annual work plan. We've always had a work plan, but this will be a much more detailed plan that will be available for anybody to look at, and will be a document that evolves as we go, as things come up, but it'll be very focused on student achievement and our operational goals.
Our initial annual work plan.
So right now, we have our, kind of our first, kind of
Draft.
Draft, but it's going to be fleshed out here soon. We have a policy regarding board members' code of conduct and how we will conduct ourselves. Policies regarding board conflict of interest so that we make sure that we're transparent and operating on the up and up. And then even a process for addressing any board member violations, because just like we hold everybody else accountable in the district, we hold ourselves accountable as well. And that's important, that was very important to us, that we hold ourselves to the same standard. Have any citizen questions, comments on this? Hey, board discussion, comments?
Joining the board as I did three and a quarter years ago, however long ago it was, I remember being introduced to much of this. This set of nine documents really is more of an expression of what existed and an example, expression of the groundwork that was laid by this board over the course of many years with respect to board culture and the way that we treat each other and the way that we represent the decisions. This was groundwork that began, really promoted, if not began, Joan and Vic and years ago, 15 years ago, I imagine, to bring us into a place where we're working collaboratively and focusing ourselves on the kids as well. I'm really glad to see that our declaration and beliefs are in this document, the thing that we've had for over a decade or two decades. I like that, and looks like a framework that will be easy to use.
Right, Rob, because for many years, I mean, I know that's the way that, as a new board member, I was introduced to, you know, the board's beliefs and how we govern, and now it's out there in a public document, and it's ours for the way that we conduct our business, rather than just being in a, kind of in a training packet for new board members.
And I like also how we lead with the board's purpose because that's, you know, our, like Vic was saying, that's our overarching beliefs and how we want to operate. I also like how things are laid out, and as you have said, even though we may already be doing this, I like that it's in print now and it's in policy, or it will be if we pass these. And it really helps to define the roles that we have, the roles and responsibilities as a board, and the roles and responsibilities as the superintendent, and with this new superintendent just starting with us, you know, it's a great time to be able to define those in such great detail. So I really like this move that we're heading towards.
Water?
Yeah.
I think one of the other things that I'd like to mention about this is as we roll all this out in a more public way, it's kind of codifying what we already do in many respects, but it also emphasizes that each of us, as individuals on the board, have diverse ideas, have differences of opinion, but that as a team and as a board, we come together to make the best decisions for our district, and that when it's all said and done, we move forward once a decision's made, unified, to keep the district on track and moving forward in the direction that we all believe is the best direction to go. And I also like it that, and you'll see this kind of as we evolve in this, that there'll be much more thoughtful intention about getting input and having more engagement with the different stakeholders in the district. And that's one of the goals that we'll be working on, is how do we create those systems and create those opportunities for the different constituencies to be able to communicate with the board in a way that gets us the information that we need to have to make the right decisions? So that piece I feel really, really excited about, so.
It's worth mentioning too that it, these are all expressions of best practices that the National School Board Association and the Washington State School Directors Association has been forwarding and really promoting as effective for a governance culture. So we're adopting a lot of best practices.
I just want to note, and it'll make Michael happy, because there are several of these policies that directly overlap with some of the 1,000-series policies that currently exist, and with the approval of these, when the policy, current policy manuals were handed to me, I would rescind those policies and eliminate them.
Okay, so I'm going to move forward to the board superintendent relations. And through the documents that kind of articulate how the board and the superintendent work together and the roles that we play, talks about how we evaluate the superintendent and the fact that his, as he mentioned, his annual evaluation will be essentially tied to the school district's evaluation and everything that we're monitoring. So it's a very accountable situation for the superintendent, so we're excited. John has been very supportive of this because this has been, this whole effort is not being brought forward to the board by this new superintendent or administration. This is the board's decision to move forward in this direction, and I feel really excited because the staff, as far as the cabinet and Dr. Stich, have been really engaged in this and cooperative about it and thoughtful in their comments, and I feel like we've really come to the best good in a situation like this, so I'm excited about it. So these policies that you'll see here, we talk about how we communicate with the superintendent as the board, how we, let me remind myself, that we, as we direct the superintendent, it's going to be through official decisions of the board. We don't, contrary to popular belief, I don't go into the office and tell John what to do or any other staff member what to do. And this just kind of talks about how we're going to, how things happen, because sometimes people want us to tell people what to do, but no, we don't do that. So I'm excited to have it in writing so that people will really understand what the role of the board is and how we do it. We have some, we have a policy here on staff accountability and who is accountable for the staff in the district. We're accountable to hire and fire the superintendent, and everybody else is superintendent's job to manage and to supervise and things of that nature. We have a policy in there that talks about what the authority of the superintendent is. It's got, it talks about all the results policies, operational expectations, and how that all flows together with our expectations and results. I can hardly think, it's so hot in here, I'm sorry, you guys.
Bucked it near evaluation.
Thanks, Sue.
So anyway, do we have any questions by the audience or comments by the audience on this section of policy? Open up for discussion by the board.
There's a lot to report out, though, isn't it? It's, again, board superintendent relationship, some of this is, all of this is in a context of state law, some of this comes from state law, some of it comes from best practice. Can you imagine a committee of five trying to reach down into a teacher's classroom and change what happens there? It just wouldn't work. So this keeps us focused on governance and gives us the single point of contact we need to do the governance work. That might sound like a repetition, but
No, but it is.
A lot of these just document the different reports and how we're going to get our monitoring and how we're going to see the results that are being done on a monthly basis.
And you see it there, authority of the superintendent is one document, accountability of the superintendent is another document. Good framework.
The other thing too, I think it's really important, we talk a lot about professional development for the staff. This summer was like major professional development for the board to do this work, have really been discussion about it, and this will be a continuing thing because as we go through and we're monitoring these policies and we're setting, we're deciding whether or not the district has met or not met the criteria, it should create deeper conversations as we're trying to teach that to our students. We want to model that behavior as well, and we want to continually be improving as a school board, as we expect everybody else to be continually improving. So it's our professional development this summer was this work, and I really appreciated everybody's diligence in this and perseverance and, good, it was good. Five full days, we worked together on part of it, and there's more to go.
I think it's worth commenting that the driving philosophy behind this is that the board has defined for me the results and the clear expectations on what they want, but not how they want it achieved. And it gives me as a superintendent and our administrative team and principals and teachers the flexibility to define the how we get there. So many boards get mired in the process of how things are getting done, that they never focus on what the final outcome is. And these policies are intended to ensure that the board keeps forcing me to provide evidence of results and not process and promises. This is what we've done, not this is what we're planning to do. And to me, that's, it comes down to the authority and the accountability to be able to run the district in the way that our team as professionals can do the best that we can for kids and then still be accountable to the board, to the community through the board.
Else before we move on? Okay. All right, let's move on. Our next order of business is public hearing. This will be a first reading regarding the proposed budget for 2017-18. And I, do you have anything you want to say before we bring Mike up?
No.
Okay. Mr. Merlino.
I don't need to be a warm-up act for Mike.
It's already warm enough.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Apparently we've had some malfunction with the equipment.
Don't, nobody touch anything, just let Elizabeth, because she knows it all.
I just wanted to see Elizabeth get, it's kind of
Air movement.
Yeah, I mean, she needs to, she's overheating over there a little bit. I'll do my best to speak over the fan.
What?
You have fans?
Yeah, we've got, we've brought in a few fans for my presentation tonight.
It's nice to keep the hot air just moving around.
Circulating. So we are going to walk through the general fund budget, or actually, the budget for the school district. We're not going to actually walk through the budget, it's a very thick document, you've got some highlights that we're going to discuss tonight. And I would remind everyone that the budget was completed by the legislature somewhere around midnight on June 30th. The budget typically is made available to the public by the 10th, I think, of the month of July. That was extended by a week to the 17th of July. OSPI gave us the tools to start finishing the budget, I think, on the 18th of July. So it's a pretty narrow window that we had to actually complete this, but we'll go ahead and walk through this. We'll start with the general fund. Our beginning balance coming into the year is going to be right around 28.1 million. We have various reserves that make up the 28.1 million. The reserves, the non-spendable includes reserves for food service, reserves for the professional fund, teacher professional fund, skill center, just giving you some background. The committed to other purposes are for things like school building carryovers, CTE carryover, as fast as I can, capital renewal and technology. Our revenue for the year is right at 344 million, and expenditures and transfers just over 345. We project an ending fund balance of a little less than 27 million. We've talked previously, there was quite a bit of curriculum adoptions done in the spring for digital curriculum, and we expect a little bit of a decrease in the fund balance potentially to occur related to that, some one-time expenses there. And you can see the ending reserves, the more significant of the three is the committed to minimum fund balance. We have a board policy, and I think it's a new operational expectation of a 5% of the previous year's expenditures. This would allow us to achieve that. I've given you, you can see here, if I push the button, that there, this gives you a historical idea of what our FTE has been over the last eight or nine years. We're budgeting for a small decrease in FTE and in headcount, the 26,366, which is actually lower than where we were in 1314. So for the most part, we've seen pretty flat enrollment to a little bit of a decline over the last several years, and one of the things that has happened over the last three or four years is that the state has fully funded full-day kindergarten. So even though our FTE enrollment sells a little bit of a flat as the number FTE-wise, we've probably decreased because we've been able to count full kindergarten students where we haven't in the past. Special ed, you also get some idea on special ed, being the two kind of key drivers to the budget, how many kids do we have in regular ed, how many kids we have in special ed. You can see, we've been You can see, we've been monitoring for the last several years, the special ed, what is the percentage? The state has capped us historically in terms of funding at 12.7%. So our special ed enrollment, if we were over 12.7% of the basic ed, we didn't receive funds. One of the things that the legislature did in their new budget was expand that to 13.5%. So there is some ability to count and collect funds for students over the 12.7. We're budgeting for 12.9, not positive that's going to happen, but that's where we're at with the budget. The next sheet, we have kind of historically given, what are the levy rates that we're looking at? The community authorized a bond in 2002, they authorized an M&amp;O levy a couple of years ago. We've typically shared with the community, what do we expect those rates to be? So you can see what those rates are that we expect to be in 2018, a reduction of the M&amp;O levy rate and the debt service levy rate increases just a little bit, but overall a fairly consistent number. A large change in the budget that came from the legislature was a change in the way that they're funding basic education through the McCleary lawsuit. So 2018 is going to look similar in terms of our levy rates. 2019 is when they start to change this model to more of a, actually, there's an increase in the state property tax rate in 2018. The M&amp;O, the districts' rates remain the same, so there will be a little bit of an increase in 2018 for taxpayers. That in 2019 then gets reduced, that 328 figure, the cap will be $1.50 in future years. So we'll talk more about this certainly over the next six months. I think the Columbian has already talked a little bit about it, there's some confusion with how the rules are actually going to be implemented, but this is an area we will see a lot of change in the next few years, actually. The next page kind of gives a highlight of some of the new budget items. Because of the lateness of the legislature doing their work, for the most part, the budget is kind of a status quo budget, but there had been things kind of set in motion already in previous years and previous decisions. So these are the main changes in the budget year to year, and that is that in 1718, lift, the lift initiative should be fully implemented. So we're budgeting for the final devices to be purchased and deployed in the 1718 school year. I mentioned earlier that we had done curriculum adoptions at the board level that will be fully paid for in the budget. So there's a pretty significant increase in curriculum in the 1718 budget. And that we had contracts negotiated with the teachers' union and with the two PSE groups last year. You'll remember the meetings we had last year. Some of us remember.
We're pretty warm rooms.
Those, those agreed upon figures are all in the budget as well. So other than that, there's not significant changes year to year unless there was something that the legislature did that we have the ability to react to. I also mentioned kind of new legislative items underneath the, and at the board meeting that we had in July, I kind of went into some depth in these, so I'm not going to go into as much depth, I'll probably just kind of give some big picture highlights. And I know that we've got this on video somewhere that if anybody really wants to go back and look at the details that we talked about then, they could do that online. There were a number of different kind of main bullet points that they addressed, the first being salary allocation. So as we transition into a new system, the state maintained the salary schedule in the 1718 year and provided a 2.3% COLA. As we move into future years though, it's a radically changed system. And in that new system, each district will negotiate their own individual salary schedules, and there will be a minimum and a maximum salary amount. And there will be regionalization factors, depending on what the cost of living or the median price home you have in your area, that will dictate whether you can pay a little higher than what the medium, the minimums and the maximums are. But, you know, it's been, what now, 39 days? So it's not even been six weeks since they passed it, and I guarantee that there's, there are more questions about what was done than answers that we will be working through over the next several months and probably several years, I would imagine. The second item, levies, levy equalization and new state property tax, I kind of mentioned a little bit, but the levies will be changed significantly. School districts will either have the ability to run a levy at $1.50,000 or $2,500 a student, whichever is lower, the lower of those two. For Evergreen, it will be $1.50,000, and they've changed the title, and it's now, they're entitled enrichment levies, starting in the 19 school year. Enrichment levies is their, the legislature's way of trying to clearly outline that they fund basic education and levies are only for enrichments, they're not for what they're funding in the basic education program. Again, there's a lot of work that will be done over time, and they have some pretty specific definitions of what enrichment allows for that we will, we will work with in the next few years. Program of basic education is an area where they actually did make some changes in the 1718 school year. There was additional funding provided for CTE, for the Skill Center, the LAP program, they put some new funding formulas in to drive out some additional dollars in LAP, Highly Capable, and the bilingual program, all have new funds. As well, there was some language in the budget that should allow Evergreen to start to be funded, similar to other districts in, in the state with respect to transportation. And so that's a positive for us as well. Local enrichment levy and accountability, again, I mentioned that there's a new levy. They have specific definitions in the budget and in the bill that drives out the education, the new education program, where they specifically identify things like the extracurricular program, extracurricular activities, extended school days, extended school year. So if you have a longer school day, that would be a way you could, you could use some levy funds, if you have a longer school year, you could use early learning. I think over time, we'll see whether or not that list is expanded and how that works. Reporting, accounting and transparency, this new levy will be accounted for in a specific fund. We will have to ask OSPI to approve our levies and approve the plan for expenditures. And then after we've, we've done that and had levies approved by the voters, the auditors will come in then and certify that we're not spending in areas that we, that would be considered basic education. And if there are problems where a district says they were going to do something, they did something different, and the belief is that it does get into basic ed, then they have the ability to issue findings, which would require the district then to, in a board setting, answer to the finding and kind of explain what happened. So we'll do our best to avoid that. We also will be presenting four-year budgets in the future as well as opposed to one-year budgets. Collective bargaining in salaries, again, in 1819, we start to create our own salary schedules as opposed to a statewide salary schedule. They put language in the budget that in, if there isn't a contract in place already in 1819, that CPI is the limit of the salary increase. The ability to bargain for try remains as it had previously. I think the legislature's effort to try to manage that was through levies and saying that you can't, you can't pay a higher salary than what the average salary is that they're funding. In terms of, you can pay a higher salary up to the maximum, but the amount of money that the state provides for salaries is the pool available to spend. You can bargain for things out of the levy that are pretty specifically defined. And then school employee benefits board is the fact that the state is saying that all school employees should be part of a statewide benefits scheme, similar to the Public Employees' Benefits Board. So I think it's in January of 20 that all members would be members of the school employee benefits, so each district wouldn't bargain locally for insurance the way that they have previously would be done at the state level. So they're pretty significant changes that really took a lot more time when we talked earlier and are going to take a lot more time for us to determine, even in the future, how they're going to be implemented. The next several slides are going to be kind of just big picture. This looks at expenditures, program expenditures, areas of expenditure. I want to just highlight some of the larger changes. You can look down the LAP program, you can see I mentioned earlier that the state put some additional funds in. That's about a 53% increase in expenditures in the program, so pretty significant. The bilingual ed is another significant one, the Highly Capable program, the state is funding some additional dollars, it looks like we're making reductions in the budget here. The $800,000 figure in 1617 down to the $600,000, we're actually not. What happened is we have kind of two programs that run coexisting within the Highly Capable program. One is the pull-out program that operates here at the, whatever we call the building now, the portable next door, Home Choice, Legacy, it's been different things, not Legacy. But, and then we have the, the full-day program that operates at Image and at Ilahi. We made a, there was a decision made this year to charge those programs to the basic ed, the full-day program, accounting-wise, that was done, they still are really identified as highly capable. So we're not changing the program, it was really a recoding of, and we may have to recode that back so that we show that clearly. Realistically, we receive around $600,000 from the state, and you'll see it on a separate slide, we're probably spending about 1.2, 1.3 million on the program. The next page looks at some of the federal dollars, and then bottom line, you can see that we go from around 331 million to 345 million in terms of overall expenditures in the program in 1718 in the budget. We also have the next document that shows activities, we've done this for the last several years, showing where are the dollars being spent in not only actual expenditures, but what are we doing in the budget. So the first two areas, you have actual expenditures from '04-'05, which goes well back to before we had made some of the changes in the budget with the budget cuts of the '09-'10, '10-'11, which now, as I start to, it's like I'm talking about history, it's so long ago. We may not talk about it as much in the future because it has been a long time since some of these things happened. But it gives you an idea of where Evergreen compared in '04-'05 and in '14-'15 to large districts in the state and to the statewide average, and then in the 1718 year, what is the budget area. So you can see that we're looking at about 73% of the budget going to teaching and classroom teaching support, which would be like the library, counseling, professional development, those kinds of things. And you can see the various areas. We've trended below the statewide, or the averages for central administration and pretty close to building administration, but this is really just informational to give you an idea where the dollars are being spent in the district. On the revenue side, you can also see the, again, this is, gives all of the different categories revenue, you can see that large increase in LAP, the 55%, you can see the bilingual, you can see the highly capable increases. And on the second page, you end up with a total increase of about 4%, that 343, 344 million dollars in revenues. And, you know, we've, we've had the opportunity to meet previously and kind of talk about some of these in more detail, and you've had the documents, and we're available in my office to anybody that wants to talk and, and discuss these further. It's just a little warm, and I understand that budget, while to me, it warms me up talking about the budget, typically the rest of the room, it needs about a 90-degree room to heat the rest of the room up. So, budget staffing indicators at every board meeting, yes?
What are we going to deal with?
20%, so you're talking about the federal revenue that we have. We receive as a district a range from either 150 to maybe $300,000 in that particular reimbursement, and it's for work that staff does, that we bill on. So...
Do we have to eliminate those services?
We, no, we won't, we won't eliminate, we will continue to do, we just will receive less funds for those things, which is all part of the special ed program, so we won't reduce program for that. And honestly, when you talk about 20, you know, 30, $40,000 out of $350 million budget, while it's not ideal, it's not a number that's large enough that we, you know, we absorb it somewhere, we'll absorb it somewhere else. Yeah. This document is one that we present as part of, we've presented as billing indicators over the last several years. This gives you an idea of enrollment in the various areas, elementary, middle, high school, alternative, CTE, special ed, ELL. What we're budgeting for at elementary is a small, a slight decrease in enrollment. In middle school, a little bit of an increase, in high school, a little bit of a decrease. Overall, a slight decrease in enrollment. And then what we'll do throughout the year is we'll update, as of September, October, what are the numbers and what do we expect there, these numbers to be. These numbers all drive out staffing figures for the various areas. Elementary, we've allocated just less than 640, what's in the budget is just over 640, so we're a little over in what we had allocated. Same thing with middle school, same thing with high school. Total allocation, we allocated right around 1,228 FTE, and we budgeted for 1,230. And we will then throughout the year, update these figures and see how well we've done compared to overall. I don't, you know, this year should be a, I think, I think this year should be a pretty standard year for us in the general fund. I mean, without many changes, it shouldn't, there shouldn't be surprises to us. I think the concerns for us, and John and I, as we've talked about it, are the future years, what, what does the new system, how does it actually work for us? And they come up with a state average salary for these various things, how does that compare to what our actual average salaries are at that time, and what are the rules around that? And so that's what we'll be, we're already starting to work on 1819 and 1920, but we'll obviously pay real close attention to 1718. Also, just briefly, want to mention the other funds, Capital Projects Fund, we still have around 28, 29 million dollars in the Capital Projects Fund. We bring in impact fee revenue throughout the year, that's the only revenue that's really coming in unless we make a transfer. We've budgeted to spend most of the money, I don't really anticipate that we will, but we've budgeted to give us ourselves the capacity. I think what we will see is some potential land purchases as we prepare for the bond in the future. And capital renewal, we've done a lot of capital renewal out of the last several years out of the general fund. I think this summer will either be the Capital Projects Fund, the existing Capital Projects Fund, or it could be if we're able, fortunate enough to pass a bond in the year, that we would have some proceeds from the bond to start doing it. And, and the only thing that could happen is, with bond passage, if things ramped up quick enough, we could have to do a budget extension if the numbers got that high that soon. I don't know that that will happen, but that's a possibility. The Transportation Vehicle Fund allows for us to purchase buses, which we have done quite extensively throughout the years. When I started in the district, I remember coming to a board meeting, and Victoria would be one of the only other people here that would recall it, that we changed the way we did transportation because we didn't have any money following the buses, and we made a lot of cuts to start that. We're probably over 50 to 60% of our fleet now has money following it to replace it. So what we've done is budgeted $2 million to replace buses in the 1718 year. I don't know that it will be that much, but we give ourselves the capacity. Each bus is about 100,000, so that would only be 1819 buses. I don't think that we'll get that many this year, but we give ourselves the capacity. The board certifies what the ASB funds in the schools submitted to budget, so this just... just reflects what the buildings have sent to us, middle school and high school buildings for ASB. You're authorizing the expenditure amount. And then in the Debt Service Fund, again, the last bond that was passed was 2002, and when that was done, it gave the school district the ability to levy annually the amount of money that was required to pay the principal and interest on those bonds that were issued. This budget does that for us as well. That's the presentation. What we would do is, any questions that come up between now and two weeks from now, when the board actually approves the budget, we will respond to anything, anyone, whether it's the public, or the board, or staff. And then two weeks from now, we would come back and present a resolution that the board would authorize to certify the expenditure levels for all the various funds in the '17, '18 school year, as well as authorizing some transfers for various things that have been authorized previously. So, and we'll talk about that in two weeks. So, happy to answer any questions?
If you have any questions or comments by the audience? Bern?
Thank you for taking time to meet with us individually too and answer questions that we had.
I had a question. You mentioned there are questions about the new legislation and how basic education is funded. What are some of those questions that potentially have the biggest impact on our budget going forward?
I think, I think that the legislature has tried to reinstitute something called salary compliance that was in place years and years ago, where the state said, "We're giving you this much money for certificated instructional staff. We're giving you this much money for certificated administrative staff, and we're giving you this much money for classified salaries, and that's how much you can spend on the basic ed program, on base salaries to those areas." That, obviously, I think I started doing this stuff in like the late '80s, early '90s. And at that time, there used to be calculations done for compliance to make sure that they were staying within that. That eroded over time to where McCleary ended up occurring, and the legislature tried to put in a system that goes back to that and specifically say that you can't spend local levy money on anything other than an enrichment. So I think the question's going to be, what are the rules around that ultimately, since really over 80% of our budget is around salaries and benefits? If, if they've put a system in place that still allows some of the bargaining rights that the various groups have enjoyed, but still has a kind of a circle around that dollar amount that's available in these various areas, I think the question's going to be around the rules of implementation of some of those things and how that ultimately works.
Audit process.
And, and the audit process, and whether or not, we had meetings with various legislators, and one of the questions was whether or not, would there be districts that if they were audited and were found to have findings, that they didn't care? I'm fine as a board to publicly talk to my community about this finding because I think the way that, what would the legislature do to respond to that if, if that happened? So some of those areas are things that we will see play out over the next few years, I would imagine, and probably the next several years.
I just wanted to express appreciation for the work you did to bring this together in the condensed timescale that you had.
Yeah, and I want to thank everybody, all the, you know, cabinet members that worked with the buildings that submitted the work, and Tammy Gasaway in particular, who, who does really all of the work of getting it into the system. So it's, it's a work of a huge team, and I agree, that was a pretty short period of time to try to get something turned around. Hopefully next year, we will have a little more time.
Brings eternal.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda, and this, tonight consists of a number of minutes for board meetings. If I have a motion for...
Move that we approve the minutes?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Next up, we have the Superintendent Consent Agenda. This is the portion of the consent agenda that is the operational work of the board, personnel reports, agreements, payroll, our regular consent agenda. Have any questions on this?
Yeah, and I have to recuse myself from those same accounts, payable warrants, vouchers, because of a remote interest in Microsoft stock.
Other discussion or... All entertain a motion for approval of the Superintendent Consent Agenda?
I would like to move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the super... The Superintendent's Report?
Just a couple brief things. One is, we submitted a hazard mitigation plan to FEMA, and it was officially approved. The reasoning for this is there is some earthquake preparedness and mitigation grants that we may be eligible for. We're in the process of looking at that. It has to do with roof trusses at a couple of our elementary schools that don't meet current seismic standards. And, so the big question we have that we're trying to work through is whether or not, if we were to apply for those grants now, we could blend those funds with bond money if the bond passes next spring, or whether we need to wait, find out whether the bond passes, and then apply for those next year to be able to try to hopefully supplement bond money to be able to address the roof trust issue in a replacement of those schools. So, as soon as I know that answer, I'll pass that information on to you. Also, we found out a couple districts have been looking at their directory information definitions, and one of the concerns that's come about recently is the collection of place of birth with some of our students. We reviewed our own current policies and found that we do list that under directory information. It's actually listed on the federal website under FERPA as a recommended directory information. At this time, it would be my intent later this month, rather than trying to get through the whole reading process with the board, I'll wait till after the 22nd when that policy manual's remanded to me, and I, my intent would be to remove place of birth from our directory information definition. We verified that we legally can control that ourselves. And we are in the process of evaluating whether we even want to collect or need to collect that information. So hopefully within the next week or two, we'll know for sure whether we even need to collect it, and if not, we will eliminate that from our enrollment process for students, just to make sure that all of our families feel safe in enrolling and providing us accurate information. Also want to just highlight that our communications and community department put together a couple nice videos. We have one on our new principal, Becky Chase, at Burton, and also a nice one on our summer projects, and there's a lot of summer projects underway. Also want to, just to report to the board that it looks like we're going to have the green light to move forward on the Orchards Road.
Finally.
So, ideally, this will be completed this fall. We'll get the final road into Orchards, and we will get final occupancy of the school from the city. So, that's an exciting piece of news. And the last thing I had was that the ESSA plan is now out for review from the state, and there's a series of webinars, and we're in the process of cabinet-level coordinating, sitting in on some of those webinars and providing feedback to the state on our ESSA plan. So that's what I've got.
Next up, we have board comments. Do we have...
I just wanted to say, and I told Gail on my way in, that the website looks fantastic. There's been a redesign, and I'm sure that Derek's team had something to do with that too, but it looks really, really nice.
Exactly.
I'll show you how to look through it later.
I appreciate the look and feel of the new website as well. I've also noticed more and more of the new design signs, the school signs and the directional signs that have kind of unified all the buildings under a color scheme. I think Gail and others have been at work at that for years, trying to get, you know, at least three years, because we were talking about it three years ago, and it's finally coming to fruition, and it looks really good out there. And welcome. Personally, from me to you, welcome, and I'm confident that you're going to do a good job for our kids.
And I echo that. Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Great to see you in that seat.
No.
Nope.
Why start now?
Yeah.
Julie, do you have anything?
The only thing that I have is I wanted to bring attention to, I agree, I like the websites looking good. And today Elizabeth walked me through, if you go, okay, I want to make sure how I got there. So if you go on the front page, you go down to Apartments, then you go down to School Board. We just pop up, we're right there. And, but if you go over on the right and click on the meetings and all that, you can get our meetings, but you can get our board docs. So that's something new, and I think that's exciting, that people are able to go in there. That's where the videos are of past board meetings, policies, so all the stuff that we do on our computers up here will be in there. So, just make note of that, that there's a good link there.
That's something I forgot to mention. So next week, we have our management seminar on Monday at Cascade Middle School, and we're going to be doing a lot of equity work and equity training. Almost more importantly, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week is our One by One Conference. I think the latest numbers I heard is we had 870 people signed up. We've got some amazing keynote speakers. We have the Slants, not only as a keynote, Simon Tam not only as the keynote speaker, but the Slants will be performing at noon on Thursday in the courtyard at Evergreen High School for entertainment for lunch. The Supreme Court victorious Slants, who can now trademark their name. So, hopefully, I think we've still got room in the conference. If more people want to sign up, I figured I'd do a PR plug, and who knows, there may be somebody still watching at the end of the meeting.
No, I'm excited about it. I'm going to be there, you know, to, to see how everything goes, and I just, I was, when I was reading all the offerings on the One by One, it's like, it's like going to a full-on conference. And so, the level and of professional development that is being offered to our staff is really impressive, and, and I'm happy to see that other districts can participate as well, and I really like that. And, so I'm looking forward to next week and observing and participating with it.
And we have, at least one TV station's going to be there to do some filming. We do have a Kid Zone area where we're doing, we have teachers working with students as actual examples of implementation. So in some of the breakout sessions, you'll be going and actually seeing it live in action, and the students that we're serving are the children of our employees that we're providing really cheap daycare. And they become part of the conference, which is a really innovative thing that I don't know if I've ever seen before, so I want to commend our CNI department for coming up with that.
Don't you mean...
Yeah, very inexpensive, great educational experience during the day. It's not daycare, it's an educational experience.
That's good, that's good. Okay. Do we have any future agenda items that would like to be suggested by the board? Do, but I'm sure we'll have things coming up, that's for sure. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. This is a time for anyone in the audience to address the board. It can be of anything except legal or personnel in nature, and it looks like we have one person who has signed up, Cyrus Maxon. If you could please approach the board and speak to us from the podium, give us your name, and, or do you need, do you need him to give his name and address for the record or just from off here? Okay. So for the, since we videotape, if you can let us know your name and address for the record. And the comments must be limited to three minutes.
Name is Cyrus Maxon. Address is 1519 Ash Street. That's here in Vancouver, 98661. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Cyrus Maxon. I'm the night lead custodian at Heritage High School here for the Evergreen School District. I've worked for ABM Onsite Services for a little over a year and a half. I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 49. Proud to be a part of the educational community. I love providing quality customer service to our clients. Very satisfying to watch kids get their education and graduate. Gives me great pleasure to know that as custodians, we play a role in that. We work extremely hard to provide a clean and secure environment where teachers can excel and students can thrive. As a night lead, I have a lot of responsibilities. I supervise a crew of five people, and sometimes I'm training multiple people at the same time. In addition to my own custodial duties, where I'm responsible for cleaning an entire wing, I have to clean the lobby of the school, the office, the activities offices, and restrooms. I'm also frequently called out to set up for special events and deal with emergencies, make sure the floors, windows, stairwells are all clean, and perform security walks that usually consist of making sure that each area of the school is secure. I've developed strong relationships with the school staff. I would like to continue my work at the school for years to come. It's a struggle to make it on our low wages. I currently have to borrow money every month to pay my rent. Frequently have to pay late fees if I am late with my rent. My wife and I both work to support our one-year-old. And as a matter of fact, we just received our three-day notice to either pay or vacate yesterday, so we have to choose between buying food and providing a roof over our heads. Though our combined income is too much to qualify for any government subsidies such as housing or food stamps, but not enough to live comfortably. Every month, we are barely scraping by. We live off of credit cards and loans, pay the minimums, just about it. I was recently in a car accident. Haven't been able to make the repairs because I can't afford the insurance deductible. Our rent keeps going up. Love being able to buy a house, but we can't afford it on our high debt and low wages. Currently, we are bargaining our contract with ABM Onsite Services, and the 2.5% wage increase they are offering is not enough. The average custodian earns about $14.47 per hour. The 2.5% wage increase on that hourly wage is about $750 monthly. The 2.5% wage increase on that hourly wage is about $750 monthly. As a lead custodian, I am paid more than other custodians, some of which have no other choice but to live in a studio apartment with their spouse, and others who cannot afford a place of their own, live with their parents, or even living in their cars. I'm here tonight to ask you for your support to the custodial staff by demanding that ABM Onsite Services provide a fair wage increase to keep up with the cost of living that will allow custodians to continue serving the Evergreen School District.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you for your time.
Follow up with that? Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on any other subject? Rob?
Good evening, can you hear me? I can never tell. Yeah, yeah, good evening. Rob Lutz, 2605 Northeast 91st Street, Vancouver, Washington. I just wanted to come and check in with you guys. I have, I read all the board stuff before we have the meeting, so my head is spinning when reading it, thanks for your explanation. I have a little, quite a bit better understanding of what your mindset is, so I have a whole lot less questions to dig through. I guess one of the big things, I need to reread them now, so that way, now that I have that mindset, to see if this is or is not in there, but if it's not, I want to recommend as part of your expectations, the superintendent achieve is high staff morale, which could definitely help any things that could come up in the future. Does, it makes sense that you're not micromanagers of the superintendent's work, but to have that expectation of this high staff morale can, would definitely make my membership quite happy. Also, I did notice today, and I think I understand why, we had seven policies with respect to second readings passed today in a consent agenda, which, if I understand correctly now, is that you're expecting that as an operational system that you're going to handle now. I think I get that. I would, I would be very careful in that process, I get the concept. One of the things that pride ourselves in what we've done here in the years, frankly, there are other districts frankly, that hide things in their consent agendas. I have my colleagues, my, my union colleagues all the time concerned about that, and I've never had to make that complaint. And I've read the policies that you passed, it is nothing in there controversial, nothing I'm complaining about, but be careful with that, to make sure that it does feel transparent. I know that's a goal, I mean, certainly posting the documents themselves is a step towards that piece, and that's a good thing, and with that being our goal, let's make sure that we are careful with the use of consent agenda. And if you're, I also recommend then, if this is going to be the new practice, you consider moving the board comments, the citizen comments, to the front of the meeting, where if indeed the superintendent is bringing his interpretation for a consent reading, that if indeed somebody sees something that they really do have a concern about, they can at least mention it for you to hear and decide whether you want to put that as part of your consent agenda or reconsider later. And then I just, I just now have heard the SEIU concern, and this is one of the things we don't have to fight about, we both are on the same side on this, right? We can, I encourage us both to, to contact ABM and work through the process, it's in the interest of all of us to have our custodials feeling safe, secure, and valued. Thanks.
For information, we don't normally comment during citizen comments, but I do want to let you know that before we approve any of those on the second reading of the board, the new operational and results policies and all of that, there's always going to be a point in there for citizen comments in that section. So, we have that covered. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, well then we will go into recess, where the board will, will sign documents, we will reconvene for a board meeting debrief and workshop, where we will have, also have legislative updates. We will be talking about our linkage and communication plan, additional budget update and superintendent's update. Thank you.